I'd like to bring to order the Monday, November 22 meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Cook?
Present.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Viera is absent.
Yes, yes, he's ill. First item, and I'm very pleased to do this, is the recognition of the Tiverton High School Boys' varsity soccer team and coaches. They are the Division III title champions. Undefeated, I believe, correct? Yeah, guys. On behalf of the Tiverton Town Council, I'd like to congratulate all of you for this title championship. I understand, because I was at the party Saturday night, and I understand the competition was tough, and you came together and as a team got it done, and we are very, very proud of you. I would also like, and the boys will probably roll their eyes, but I would also like to say this, recognition is not only to you, but it's to your parents. As a soccer parent myself, I know the dedication it takes to raise a soccer player. I understand the early morning Saturday night games, Saturday morning games, the several practices, and some of you probably even coached these fine young men. I would like to thank all of you for raising such fine young men and outstanding athletes. So, this is what it says, and each and every one of you will get it. The Tiverton Town Council Certificate of Athletic Recognition, 2021 State of Rhode Island, Tiverton High School Boys' varsity soccer team, Division III title championships. My vice president's gonna help me here.
So I'm gonna call a name, if you can come up to the President and accept your recognition. Logan Bouchard. Hayden Sejuski, did I get that close? Oh, yes, you're getting your pictures taken, too. Oscar Costa. Aaron Degala. Jonathan Degala. Luke Deldeho. Keegan Duttel. Jack Faria. Benjamin Farley. Keith Gillette. Caleb Goschaminski. Wyatt Halsted. Toby Harrison. Liam Hayes. James Largie. Connor McCauley. John Mello. Alex Nimorowski. Connor Nobrega. Brady Olivera. Benjamin Pacico. Jason Raymond. Nathaniel Sama. Brady Travis. Joshua Wood. Head Coach Tom Murray.
One, two, three. Thank you, buddy.
Brody Travis? Oh, I can fix that. All right, we'll have to tell Joan. We'll do it in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
And Assistant Coach Christopher Carrero.
Congratulations, everyone. I'm gonna take a quick five-minute recess so we can clear the room, and we have to fix someone's certificate.
Thank you.
Let's stay as long as you want, guys.
I have a couple of questions. I have points of concern in questioning the process. My first question, as I was reading the minutes, was I don't understand who's voting. It just says unanimous. And the reason I ask that is because, as I looked to see if there was a resolution creating the committee, I found that the only one is for May 10th, and it doesn't fit what's going on now. The one for May 10th.
Right, and what happened was we did not get any volunteers from the public. So at one meeting, and I can't remember which one it was, we decided to do a little, a little subcommittee. And at that meeting, the discussion, the Councilor Burke would chair it, and we discussed who the members would be. It was at a voluntary basis. Councilor Burke and Edwards volunteered, and I'm the alternate in case they don't have the right amount of people. And we decided to put the treasurer, clerk, and solicitor on.
Right.
And the solicitor, as we discussed at the last meeting, is non-voting.
And I have more to say. The council's policy on boards, committees, and commissions does refer under two. The guidelines will be governed by the resolution creating the advisory board or group. There is no resolution to form the present FTR personnel advisory committee. There needs to be one. It's a new committee formed under Charter Section 407-6, which requires that any committee so established shall conform to the provisions of the charter. 407-6 means the council violated the charter by creating and staffing a commission that doesn't abide by the charter.
It's not a commission, it's a subcommittee of the council.
The subcommittee of the council, you do this all the time.
The subcommittee, whatever it is, it has to conform, because first of all, this doesn't say that it's a subcommittee. It never was a subcommittee, it was an advisory board committee. So as we go, Section 1011 says members of the boards, committees, or commissions must be electors of the town of Tivon. No members of boards or commissions as listed in the charter shall be elected officials or employees of the town of Tivon, except as provided in Section 1213. The town administrator, Chris Carter, is not a resident or an electorate, is an employee of the town. Solicitor Marcelo also is not a resident or elector, is contracted to work for the town. Section 1213 is clear that no elected member of the Tivon and Town Government shall hold an appointed position at the same time, which is what this is. Furthermore, the only time an elected official can be appointed to temporarily fill a position is when it's a position held by a town employee. By definition, these positions cannot be held by elected officials. The only exception I can think of is the pension board, of which I think the administrator is a voting member. The charter specifically puts the treasurer on that board. The rest may be determined by the state law. I'm requesting that Solicitor Marcelo explain in writing how it is legal in the face of the plain language of the charter that this committee can continue to exist. Under the circumstances, why bother changing the charter? If the council is not going to abide by it, because the resolution specifies that it's a committee, not a subcommittee, 1011, 1213 mean that every person on this committee is individually violating the charter. I'm concerned that this might have consequences. Anything this committee touches could become subject to lawsuits because it is acting illegally, and the individuals violating the charter could lose their job.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I? So I assume, Counselor, that you are setting us up. That you and others, simply because you have been very vocal that you don't like this committee, this subcommittee, you don't think it's proper, and I understand that you have that, but now you are threatening us with lawsuits.
I'm saying that what you're doing is not proper.
You're threatening us with lawsuits for doing our job.
It's not proper. It isn't done proper. And I asked the solicitor to say something about all of this going on, because it is not proper.
I would just like to say something. Past practices, we do this all the time. This is not, I know.
Have you objected to other such subcommittees?
No.
Have you?
What was that?
Have you objected to other such subcommittees of the council?
The one I looked at is the casino subcommittee, and it says "subcommittee" on it.
Have you objected to other such subcommittees of the council in the past? You've been on the council for a while.
So all we'd have to do is call this a subcommittee, and we'd be safe as.
And I believe we did in the subcommittee.
We would have to do a resolution.
No, we don't have to do it. Mike?
So I'm going to look at all this. I'm not prepared to make a comment of it tonight. I would like to review the sequence of events. My understanding is that there was a call for the public to join this committee. Once that, there was no interest in the committee. This is just my memory, Donna. When there was no interest in the committee, the council decided to appoint members of the council and other department heads to serve on this committee. It's an advisory committee. They're going to give their advisory opinion to the council, who's going to vote on whether or not the charter amendments go forward or not. But you raised some issues, I'll look into them, but I'm not prepared to answer you tonight whether or not. And if the council wants me to.
I understand what you're saying, and I know the history of it. I'm very clear on the history. But I object to not following with charter as to people that are on it, because it's the government for the government. It's supposed to be for the people. The people don't want to participate. Maybe you should take a hint. But the thing's saying that you should at least follow the charter.
So instead of why this was done, instead of us having several meetings, we decided to have an advisory board to look at all the opinions and come back to it. We've done this several times in the past, and we've never been told that this was illegal. This is a subcommittee of the town council. And this advisory people, and we voted on it. We discussed this in a town council meeting, and we discussed all the members that were going to be there. And there was no objection at that time, by the way.
Except for.
Except for Donna.
Donna, so I would actually suggest that this is out of order, because she would have to take.
Oh, so you don't want her to speak?
She would have to ask for a motion to reconsider our previous vote. So if you want to have a motion to reconsider our previous vote of establishing that committee, that's a proper motion before us.
I don't think she can, because she was negative.
She was negative. So someone who was in the positive would have to.
Okay, now, Michael said that he would look into it. I think it should be looked into. And one other thing. Just because something has happened since I've been told before doesn't mean going forward with something wrong. You continue with it.
But I'm not convinced it's wrong. So we'll have the solicitor look at it. Okay, Mike, I almost put it on the next agenda. So the next item is approval of license renewals, holiday license. Mike?
This is a question for the solicitor. I know that by state law, cities and towns are to issue holiday licenses for businesses who fall under that statute and who want that. Our, my understanding is our holiday license process is a no-fee process. Is that correct, Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
So I just, for me, it's a, it's a business-friendly thing, is I don't understand why we can't simply provide a business when they get their original license for whatever that is, we provide them with a holiday license at the same time. So that's a thought. It's not anything we can do tonight, but it's a thought for us.
All right.
We can sort of do that, especially if there's no fee. We could just apply for the regular license. We'll automatically give them the holiday license.
If, if they want.
It is a separate license, however.
Well, I mean, they can.
If they want it.
Right, or if they, even if they get it, they don't have to do it. It doesn't make them be open on the holiday.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve 4A135D holiday license renewal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second and further discussion. All those in favor?
I'm not sure what you said. Was it five? What'd you say?
A.
Four A?
Four A, one, two, three, and five.
Yeah, the ones we pulled off, 4A135D holiday license renewals.
Do them separately.
Do I do it separately?
I want five to be voted separately.
Didn't we just, I just voted, and we got, we got it, right?
Motion to reconsider the last vote.
Entertain a motion to accept 4A1.
No, motion to reconsider the last vote.
Reconsider the last vote.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? This is just to reconsider the vote. All those in favor? They passed. So the next motion is for 4A1.
No, next motion is to re, to vote again. And I would suggest that everybody vote it down at this point.
No.
Yeah, because we can't, yeah, the last vote was on the whole packet. So we have to vote that down.
We want to do them one at a time.
Right, or she wants, Donna wants to pull that one out, I believe. I don't know if she, Donna, do you want to do all of them? Separately, or just one separately?
Just five.
Okay, so we have to.
So we could do A1, 3, and holiday.
But first, we have to vote down the original motion.
Well, no, it's just a motion to reconsider. You just reconsidered.
We just reconsidered, so now it's a vote.
Now it's a vote.
Yeah.
They're reconsidering, so it's a new vote.
Right.
So it's a new vote.
Okay, that's not how I know Robert's role.
So a motion to accept 1A1, A3, and D holiday license.
I'll second that.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Entertain a motion for 4A5.
So moved.
Second, second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Court of licensing, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, do I have any? Wow, I've lost all control again. It was the sacrifice.
And where is?
Kathleen M. Smith, House Taxes. You can come to the microphone, just state your name and your address.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'm Kathleen Smith. I reside on 25 Tucker with a T Avenue in Tivon. I've been in Tivon most of my life, and I'm just really shocked at the house taxes hike that we all received. I'm thinking maybe not August, but definitely September. The town was very, very good to us during COVID-2020, and really cut us a lot of slack. But I feel like only to turn around and have taxes due September 1st, November 1st, and now January 1st, it's a really tough time of year for everyone. I just became a recipient of just my social security check, and my taxes went up $188 quarterly, which is over $3,600 a year. If I was to pay my taxes on time that particular quarter, I wouldn't have money for the rest of my bills. Nothing's changed in my house. It needs a little bit of work on the inside and outside. My landscaper needs work. The stairs that lead down to my front door are rotting. It was railroad ties, and they've seen their better days. So really no money for that. And I would like to call a meeting specifically for, to discuss house taxes and what can be done. You know, maybe if we did a little bit of this and a little bit of that, like we used to have fireworks, we used to have carnivals at Grinnell's Beach. It was a blast. It seemed like everything stopped. Even the lighting of the Christmas tree down the road, if the lights end up on, the trees missed in most of the lights. I mean, maybe somebody could get a ladder or do staging and put a lot of lights on that tree so we can celebrate the holiday. And yeah, so I'd like to see a meeting. I got the form already to call a meeting, and I don't think I speak alone. If we have that meeting, and I'm hoping for it, I believe the whole town of Tivon will show up, because there's a major problem going on.
All right, thank you.
I plan on appealing to the tax assessor. If anybody out there wants to appeal, you have to have the form into the tax assessor for him to come out and appraise by November 29th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah.
6A, David Leonard Cabral, 60 Renault Street Forever, request approval of private detective license renewal. Joan, any problems with this? Is the police chief here? Any problems with this license?
I just have a question. My question is, his business address is Fall River, from what I can see. So I'm not sure, how can we approve a business license for Fall River?
Well, that's his address, but does he practice in Rhode Island? He has a Rhode Island detective license?
Where principal place, so apply for a private detective license with local licensing authority where principal place of business is located.
Is this a renewal, Joan?
It is. And not, I'm not judging on his qualifications, I just.
No, but he may need a license in any state he practices.
I understand that. I just, from the way this, and I had, and I looked at the statute, the way the statute is written, I don't see how we can approve it.
Well, if I, I live in Tivon, but I have a license in. It says it right here. Well, where's his principal place of business located?
He says Fall River.
Yeah, the business address is.
But that person had a different, had another address in Tivon.
Chief, is that common, chief, for a private investigator to have a business en masse and get a Rhode Island license?
Is Mr. Leonard here? Mr. Leonard Cabral here?
So I'm looking under Private Detective Act in Rhode Island General Law 553. And in order to be eligible for a license, an applicant must, one, be a citizen of the United States; two, not have any convictions in any jurisdiction of a felony or felony; three, not have any previous private investigator license or registration revoked, and then it goes into more along those lines; not having been declared by any court of competent jurisdiction incompetent; not suffer from habitual drunkenness; be of good moral character, have experience gained, and at least five years of experience as an investigator in any state; a degree in criminal justice, employment by a private investigator for at least five years. I don't see anything regarding residency.
You have to go to 554.
We had, we questioned you on this last year.
I remember.
But that person, that person showed that they had a Tivon business address, eventually. It was somewhere else on the application that.
Last year.
It was last January, February, something like that. We were a little late on them.
We got two people in town that do this, right?
There might be. And again, I'm not questioning his qualifications. I just don't see how we have the.
So if he conducts private detective business here in Tivon or Rhode Island, would he be required to be licensed in any community he gets licensed in?
I believe so, unless their local ordinances require him to be licensed there. But I know, and I know you can speak to this, sir, the Attorney General's Office issues these all the time.
Is there a reciprocity statute? I don't see one.
Does it say where the principal place of business is located? I do see that as well.
So we can't.
Can we table it?
Do you know how, where he's at in terms of his license?
I can find out. I can, we can reach out. I'll work with the clerk and get an idea of where he is, and also if he does have, because I believe the last time, now that I'm thinking about this, he is associated with another private investigator, so he'll utilize that address to do business as.
And that's fine, I just, we need to.
Omitted it and probably rushed his application because it was expired.
I'll make a motion, we table it.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mohammed Kash, every time this comes for renewal, I can never pronounce the.
Kashif Kara.
Kashif Kara, Tivon Petroleum LLC, DBA Quick Fuel Stop, 861 Main Road, request approval of new licenses. Tobacco dealer and petroleum storage license.
Is this the Smokehouse Gas?
Yes.
Yeah, so why is this new?
It's a new owner?
I know, that's, I questioned that, too. He's been, he was the owner last year.
No, he works there, he's not the owner.
Was he?
Oh.
The person we know does not own it.
So they're changing the name?
Change of side ownership and request a new license.
He's signing it, though.
I don't think he owns, he owned it back, I know he didn't own it.
So he, he's now the new owner, then?
But this isn't him, anyway.
Are you sure?
Because he lives in Tivon. This is a relative, maybe, but it's not the person you're thinking of.
It says he lives in Swansea.
Swansea, says God knows.
Yeah, so the owner lives, the owner lives in Swansea, but I think the person that works there, who we assume is the owner, is not the owner. It's a family member. That's what Jeff's confused with.
But it was Smokehouse Gas. Now they're changing the name to Tivon Petroleum?
Quick Fuel Stop.
A Quick Fuel Stop?
And Tivon Petroleum LLC. The corporate name is the LLC. The corporate is the LLC. So it's not like DBA, it's Quick Stop.
So is there any questions?
So it's all the same license, just a new, new owner.
Move approval?
So who officially checks these out?
Joan?
Joan, are you, are you comfortable with it? You checked it out, right?
Right, it's a new application. It's not a renewal, it's a new application for a new owner.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? McCray's Seafood, 2DBA McCray's Seafood, request.
No, East Bay Ammunition.
Oops, sorry, East Bay Ammunition LLC, Secana River Outfitters, 777 Main Road, request approval of new holiday license.
So moved.
Second.
Main second, any further discussion? All those in favor? McCray's Seafood, 2DBA McCray's Seafood.
This one's questionable.
Request approval of peddler's license effective October 15, 2021, through October 15, 2022. Any questions?
Nope.
Well, I do, though.
This is for the food truck.
This is for the food truck to go to Town Farm. And we do have that ice cream truck that goes to Town Farm, and they needed to kind of clear it with the Little League and the soccer, so they weren't competing with concessions.
So from this point on, anyone who would like to bring a food truck or also might has a juice lemonade, has to go through the recreation committee, and they will, they will make arrangements on who's going to be there when.
But that's after they come to us.
But they have to have this approval before they.
Right, and I believe they've already worked that out, so.
Mike, did you want to say something, or was what I just said?
I was just going to say, I did already speak with the president of the soccer and the Little League. My intention's not to take money from that, those leagues, so if they don't want me there, I won't be there.
And I absolutely have full faith in you, Mike. I just know that we had said that to the ice cream truck, so I just wanted to be consistent.
So from this point on, they come for, to approve.
Get approved here first, then.
And then they go to the recreation with full approval, they can do it. And recreation will coordinate when they do it.
I'll make a motion to grant McCray's peddler's license for.
And I'll second.
Food truck.
So I have a motion in a second? All those in favor? There you go, thank you. Request a quarry license transfer renewal from Charles Corolla CMC LFP 1764 Crandall Road to Helga's Brother Sand and Gravel LLC 1764 Crandall Road, planning board recommendation. Any questions?
I got a question. So the planner went down there, took pictures. She said it doesn't look like it's done any business in quite a while. I went down there and got to see, reached the same conclusion. However, what do the Helga Brothers plan to do with it?
There's going to be, it's going to start to become a quarry, I believe.
I would assume so.
I would assume so. Now, this quarry is the only one grandfather did. This is the only quarry that we can have in town.
Willing that this is not going to go over well with the neighborhood.
Right, well, we'll see what happens. Where are we with all these quarries?
If I'm wrong, is, somebody told me this. I don't remember who was, but is there.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Like roughly 2012, about a quarry could only use like 25% of the area at the quarry?
Couldn't expand.
Expand, yeah. There is a certain percentage that they can expand beyond, correct.
The yard was already done.
Correct, and you have to submit maps and plans to do so. So yes, that's, that's in our ordinance, and that's, this is the only, believe it or not, this is the only licensed quarry that in the town that has complied with all our requirements. Every year, before even this was, every year, even before this was sold, the prior owner would come to us and renew that license. So this is a valid license that they're renewing, but now the license is being transferred. So they met all the requirements. I would like to put on the record, however, that one of the requirements is that there be a remediation bond that goes with the transfer of the license. So when the quarrying is done, they have to remediate the land and to put it back. And that's a requirement of the license. I've talked to, I don't know if I talked to the applicant or the lawyer for the applicant, but they had some difficulty getting a bond for mostly technical reasons. So this would also be contingent upon them posting the appropriate remediation bond, which is required by ordinance. I think the current bond that we have is $25,000 on this property.
So that should be in the motion.
Yeah, I mean, it does say meeting all legal requirements, but I just want to make it very clear.
It's the meet.
The, all the legal requirements, including but not limited to the posting of an appropriate remediation bond.
Well, then I'm going to suggest and recommend that we keep a close eye on the thing. You know, I understand it is the only licensed quarry in town, but it is not the only quarry in town. So we have illegally operating quarries in town, and they seem to be able to expand as much as they care to.
But this was a question during the agenda meeting. So the state licenses quarries for what kind of quarry? There's two different, right? So if the state does the granted one, there's nothing we can do about it. This quarry.
The state doesn't license them for granted. It's allowed by law to grant.
Okay.
But the state licenses this blasting. And that's what we don't have control over.
There you go. Because this, this, this came up. I brought this up at the agenda meeting. And now, this quarry does what?
Right now, it hasn't done anything. So I'm assuming it will be quarryed, so.
You're right.
Quarry what?
Stone, gravel, sand, whatever's that.
So do the butters need to know that?
No.
No?
No, and they're not to be pleased.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, it's valid. The pre-existing quarry that's been there and licensed and licensed by the town for many, many years.
But hasn't been, but hasn't been doing anything.
Not abandoned, though. But they, that's why they've been renewing their license every year. Every year, they come before us. Every year, the planning board goes out and looks, makes a survey of where they, if there's been any activity, because that goes with the 25% or the percentage increase that they're going to do. And then they, you know, they lay out the boundaries for that. I mean, just because they haven't done anything doesn't mean that it's abandoned.
Right, so I would assume that we're going to take pictures and have a GPS mapping of what's actually out there.
Cause the planner did what I did. Walked down there, did trespass. So I couldn't tell you what's done, what isn't, how deep it is, where it is.
He trespasses often now, no, no.
They were signing birds, I heard.
I think there are, there are aerials that were done at the time. There were aerials that done when this was originally opened.
Can always do a drone, I guess.
Yeah, that was one of the problems on Brayton Road. The license wasn't renewed every year. They let it expire and then we had the problem.
Correct. This, this, this one, as long as I've been here, and I understand this has been here a while, they-
As long as I've been here.
It's been there for years.
They, they, you know.
I just want to make sure it does not triple in size unbeknownst to us.
No, Jay, you're right. We're gonna have a whole meeting with neighbors here complaining if this gets to be a problem. Which they have the right to do, and we'll make sure that they're within the limits of the law.
No, no.
This is in the area of, as you go past, um-
It's right across from Arnold's Junkyard down on Crandall Road. Noah Arnold's down in the-
Is this Crandall?
Right past these, right past Lake, um, East Road.
It says Main Road.
No, it's Crandall.
It's Crandall.
I think it backs up to West Coast.
Where exactly is this?
Seventeen sixty-four.
Preserve area. It's in, it used to be the-
It's on the west side.
Almost opposite of Arnold's, uh, junkyard.
Is it on the east side?
For sure it's on the east.
It's almost opposite Arnold's. It's in the past Arnold's on the opposite side.
All right.
Yep.
Well.
And you go down a long, long way to get there.
All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the quarry license, meaning all legal requirements, including the re-
Bond for-
Yeah, the bond for remediation.
Including but not limited to.
So moved.
Second.
Including but not limited to, you have a, okay. Motion remained. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? This is my favorite meeting where I have to read all of this. So we're gonna do this in sections, and I'll read them all out loud, and then I'll ask for approval. Advertised public hearings for license renewal. F. Junkyard and Secondhand Dealer License. Arnold's Auto Parts, 1484 Crandall Road, lot 612, cod 113. General Auto Recycling, Inc., 384 King Road, lot 602, 113. LaGaz Salvage Yard, 20 Carries Lane, lot 209, cod 125. Tiven Auto Parts, Inc., 541 Bogemash Road, lot 401, 104. Sanford and Son LTD, 104 Cynthia Avenue, lot 514, cod 109. I'd like to make a motion to approve these licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Meaning all legal requirements. Oh, I like to open this up to the public. Anyone would like to talk about any of these five licenses?
Four or against.
There's five?
No, four or against, any of these?
Anyone? Okay. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Liquor license renewals, Class A liquor stores, Shand- Shandani Incorporated, DBA Tiven Liquors, 65 Main Road. Nimraji Incorporated, DBA Cross Liquors Incorporated, 1540 Bogemash Road. Smitten Incorporated, DBA Stonebridge Liquors, 2490 Main Road. Would anyone in the public like to speak far against these licenses? Like to entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Class BB liquor, full liquor license, Black Goose Company, DBA Black Goose Cafe, 2160 Main Road. Evelyn's Nana Quarket Drive-In Incorporated, 2335 Main Road. Foodworth Incorporated, DBA Atlantic Sports Bar and Restaurant, 70th Show Street. Locals Burger and Cocktails, 4 Stafford Road. Moulin Rouge, Inc., 1403 Main Road. McCray's Two, Inc., DBA McCray's Seafood, 115 Stafford Road. Newport Harbor Corp., DBA The Boathouse, LLC, 227 Schrune- Schooner Avenue Drive. Riptide Sports Grill Incorporated, 1 Bay Street. Secana River Grill, 524 Main Road. Sylvia Brothers, Inc., DBA Barcellos Family Restaurant, 1214 Stafford Road. Spring Restaurant, Inc., 118-120 Main Road. Susan's Restaurant, Inc., DBA Wally's Tap House, 13 Crandall Road. Dory Go Incorporated, DBA The Red Dory, 1848 Main Road. Everett Lane, Inc., DBA Family Ties, 221 Main Road. Sports Kitchen LLC, 300 Industrial Way. Anyone in the audience like to speak far against these establishments and their liquor license? And here comes Sally.
Here comes Sally Black, 64 Broggy Drive. Um, I'd just like to thank all these restaurants, their owners, and the people that work there for working so hard during this pandemic, trying to stay open for us, because we enjoy going to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally. Like to entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Class B V L Limited Liquor License, $400. Classic Pizza, Inc., 495 Main Road. Jack, Jackie's Galaxy, Tiven, Inc., 777, Tiven Casino Boulevard. Soul Seaberry Associates, Inc., DBA Four Corners Grill, 3841 Main Road. Groundswell Cafe and Bakery, LLC, 3883 Main Road. Would anyone in the audience like to speak far against these establishments and their license? I'd like to entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Class BT, Ben &amp; Tavern, Senior Lifestyle, Secana Bay. Uh, DBA Brookdale, Secana Bay, 1215 Main Road. Anyone like to speak far against this license? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Class C Unlimited Club License, $200, Bayview Holy Ghost Citizens Club, 66 Bottom Street. Woodrow LCVA Post Home Associate Association, Inc., 134 Chove Street. Anyone in the audience like to speak far against this license? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Class BC Casino, 2500, Twin River, Tiven LLC, DBA Bally's Casino and Hotel, 777 Casino Boulevard. Anyone in the, anyone in the audience like to, um, speak far against this license? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion being second. All those in favor? Okay. Indoor Shooting Range Renewals, Tiven and Rod and Gun Club. Anyone in the audience like to speak far against this license? All those, um, like to make a mo-, like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Now, I close the public hearing, cause this is non-advertised. Okay. Well, I do when it's a public hearing. No, okay. That's what I do, cause I can't, I hate this meeting. I should have called it. All right, um, so I'd like to close the public hearing. Non-advertised public hearings for license renewals, December 1st, 2021 to November 30th, 2022. Approval of entertainment license as listed below. Any questions from the council regarding any of these licenses? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Just so I can say you're gonna approve, I, 1 through 11.
I, 1 through 11.
Jay, mobile home park license renewals. There are four listed. Oh, all those in favor? I'm sorry. Mobile, do you know why I hate this meeting? Mobile home park license renewal is four listed. Any questions regarding this? Should I bring it up? Yeah. So there's-
No, let me work with D E M on it.
Wasn't there a question of one of them?
Yeah, there is.
Yes. There's a question on Dotson Mobile Home Owners Association.
Can we approve the other three? So I'll make a motion, we approve the other three, and table, uh, number one.
Yes, we can.
Second.
Any discussion regarding it? D E M has to work with the owners concerning some problems.
So my suggestion would be you approve those three, but then you also approve this one for three months.
A three month-
Because they need a license to continue to operate.
A three-month approval for number one?
Right, so we can figure out where they're gonna be.
The first thing we're gonna do is vote on the two, three, and four.
Okay.
I have a second to that. All those in favor? Okay, now Jay, one?
A three-month-
A three-month.
Uh, license?
Conditional.
Conditional license.
Conditional license, yes.
So it'll expire when?
It'll be back before you, cause they have to have a license to operate. So the end of February.
End of February? End of February.
Well, at that time, we might have some kind of progress.
Three months, not 90 days.
We're looking for progress.
Right.
We're looking for progress, and we're looking for recommendations from D E M. So maybe in three months, we'll, we'll have that.
And if they don't show any progress?
Then we'll discuss it at that time. So that's a whole nother discussion, and it will not happen in open.
Right.
Okay, so motion's been made, right, and seconded. All those in- Joe made the motion.
I made the motion.
Someone, who seconded?
I thought Mike did. Mike did the second.
I seconded the first one. I don't know. I'll second this one too.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Manufacturer Home, Aldele Community License. There's one. Any question? I'd like to entertain a motion for-
I just have, I just have a question.
Sure.
Has there been, has there been any complaints? I remember when I first got on the council, there was a lot of unhappy people. I don't know whether they're afraid to say anything. I don't know, but there was-
I think when you first got on the council, there was a transfer of ownership, and they were not happy with their owner, with the owners.
Has that been resolved?
I haven't heard much.
I have not heard any complaints about country of use this.
Oh, you can't do anything if no one's saying anything.
Came in with new regulations and-
Okay.
And I think that they talked it out among themselves, and I, I think that's what happened.
Okay, all right. Just wondering. Thank you.
There was an assoc-, the association came before us, but they, they never came back, so I'm assuming it's-
No, I think they met with the owners.
Yeah, I think it's been resolved.
I don't think things are perfect there, but I think there were-
No, things are not perfect anywhere.
No. So do I have a motion to approve? I don't remember.
So, second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Okay, petroleum storage license renewal. There was 11 listed. Any questions regarding these? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Fireworks license renewal.
Madam President, I'd like to recuse myself from number five.
Yes. So we'll vote on one, two, three, four, six, and seven. I'd like to entertain a motion for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remained in second. All those in-
What, this is for the fireworks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything's on number five.
I have a hard time with it because it just disrupts neighborhoods. It's going on all the time. I just don't get it. At 12 o'clock at night, but who, who you, who can, can you go to? You call the police, and you don't know where it came from, cause it's dark. And it's, it's very disruptive. I'm very unhappy that this was allowed. I, I like to let people do what they want to do, but nobody's using any common sense in my neighborhood anyway. Anyway.
I, I, I agree with you, Donna, but it, it's the law, so, I mean, it's within their legal rights.
With everything going on, they had to renew that.
I agree with you, because they, it's not just the Fourth of July.
It's all year.
It's all year, yeah.
So I have a motion to approve one, two, three, four, and six, correct?
One, one to, one to four, six, and seven.
Six and seven. And I had a second, Joe?
I am.
All those in favor? So then M5, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? Now, Joe's recusing himself. He has to fill out a form?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, motion remained in second. All those in favor? Joey, you're gonna do the next one too, right?
Yeah.
Flea Market License Renewal.
It must be into fireworks.
Joey, you're recusing yourself from the interim?
Yes.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Okay, now the meeting should speed right up. Recreation Commission, Councilor Perry, discussion and possible vote for approval of tree lighting ceremony at Fort Barton Town, at Fort Barton and Town Hall on December 4th from 3 to 9. We discussed this at the last meeting, and we said it had to come for approval.
Right, so that's what we're looking for approval to-
So be exactly what we've done in the past there.
Yes, exactly.
With a lot of lights.
Tree lighting out front, Santa Claus come down on a fire truck, go to the school, and have some refreshments and take pictures, take pictures with Santa Claus, and then, uh-
And Joe and I dress up as elves, so if you wanna come, Joe and I are elves there, so.
Yeah, dunk the tank. We'll be in the dunk tank.
And a lot of lights, please.
Yeah, yeah, we dress up as elves.
Joe, a lot of lights.
A lot of lights.
Lot of lights.
Christmas lights?
On the tree. No bear spots.
Oh, well.
No, over here, there's, there's never spots over here. It's the one coming down.
Yes, down the road. That's the one down the road they're talking about.
That's, yeah.
Down at Main Road.
The one near-
At the corner of Lawton Avenue and Main Road. That's the one she was talking about.
The doctor's office.
It's private?
We usually do it, but we haven't done it in a couple of years.
Okay, so motion's been made, right? No, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Open Space Commission, Brian Jane, discussion, possible vote regarding award of contract to GZA Geo Environmental, Inc. For 100% design Fogland Stormwater Project. Hi, Brian.
Hello. So this is continuing the project we've been working on to try and prevent the flooding at the beginning of Fogland Road, uh, three-rodway, I should say, on Fogland Beach. 60% design's already been completed. That was under funding through Coastal Resources. And they hired this company through a bid process. And we're now recommending that we continue with the same company, cause they've done the 60% design work to get us to 100. And it's fully funded through the SNEP grant, Southeast New England program that we applied for, with your permission. And there is a slight difference when we applied. The estimate was 34,700. It's now dropped a little bit.
Wow.
To complete the work, because Save the Bay identified a staff member who could do the wetland delineation part of it for us, for free.
Perfect, nice.
It's still a grant though, right?
Thirty-three-two.
It's a grant, right?
It's what?
Grant.
Yes.
Any questions for Brian? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay. Second.
Motion's remained in second. All those in favor? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Economic Development Commission, Renee Jones. She's here somewhere. There she is. Um, support shop small.
This is just a, a quick announcement, really. And actually, it was kind of interesting for me to be s- Thank you. I'm so proud of you all here. I brought more.
I have one. We all have. Joan gave us all one.
I thought it was like, um, like an iron-on when I, you win. I just came out of, I came out of my printer, so no, it's not an iron-on.
You can iron all night.
But actually, I thought it was kind of interesting to sit here, listening to all these businesses going for their licenses. So I have two questions. When they get their license renewed, do we have to notify them so that they do that? Because I sure would like their emails when they send things, something back.
Renee?
We probably have their emails.
This is public. You can have each of all these.
All their emails?
And most of them have emails on them.
Yeah, emails and phone numbers and ad- yeah.
I'll give her a copy tomorrow.
Are you kidding me?
No, 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 I wanna get her a mic.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, wait, no.
Look at that.
Why, thank you.
I've never seen anything so happy.
And if there is no email, if there is no email now, let's call them and get one.
You know what? Honestly, this is like, this is not just my issue. This is an issue for the state.
Phone numbers, you get addresses and everything.
Because, um, the state doesn't have emails. And so, think about it during COVID, when we were trying to get information out about funding and whatever. I could not get things out. It could go on the website, but I could not get things out in a timely manner. So I will go through these, and if you, anything else you get that has emails, please, it's important.
Yeah, don't worry, Renee.
But anyway, I just wanted to-
I'll give you more work all the time.
I'm sure you will. All right, anyway, um, so my little speech is, you know, shopping and dining on Small Business Saturday is one way to show appreciation, just like, um, oh, she just left. Just like Sally said, for the local businesses, especially those that we've depended on during the pandemic.
This is this Saturday.
This is this Saturday, so, November 27th, right. It started with American Express, and they just kept it up and keep doing it. So when you shop locally, you support your neighbors. The ones who, uh, who, when you ask, are the most likely to support your school teams, playground building, and many other causes. So when you're supporting your local businesses, you're supporting the people that give back to you. Um, and in taxes and in other ways as well. So, um, I just, as an advertisement, this Saturday is also gonna be a pop-up farmer's market on, uh, at Sandy Woods. Yes, it's a, it's, and it's gonna be a big one from 12 to 4. Um, and small vendors will be selling anything from organic greens to cutting boards. So get a jump on your Christmas shopping and support small businesses. So that was my speech.
To do on Saturday.
You have something to do, and thank you very much, and if anybody-
And do late Hanukkah shopping, cause it starts on the 29th.
There you go. If anybody wants more of these to put anywhere, I'd be more than happy to just give them a deal.
Thank you, Renee.[1789.96]
And shop small, everybody.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
You've got a present. I'm so, anyone so thrilled with things like that. Taxes, that's a rabbit, a rabbit's discussion, possible vote. A pay-as-you-throw free trash bag program regarding income limits.
Good evening. If you recall, a few weeks ago when I was before the council, I talked about bringing to you an update on exemptions and taking a look at those. While I was taking a look at that and putting that together, I came across a pay-as-you-throw program and some residents have brought that up to me. So, dozen years ago or so, back in 2012, I believe, the town council, they instituted this pay-as-you-throw trash program and there was discussion about giving some free bags to the lower-income residents. So over the course of a few meetings, there had been discussion about how that would be set up, what would be some of the controlling criteria and such. And on January 23rd of 2012, the town council voted that there would be an income limit of $22,000. And at that point in time, that $22,000 income limit came from the elderly low-income exemption, that's what that limit was. So they decided to reflect that, but they also added the assessed value of a home couldn't exceed a certain dollar number as well. So, many years have passed and we have updated the elderly low-income over the years. So this is something that I think may perhaps the town council would want to visit as far as modifying what the income limit on this program would be.
What do you suggest, Ed?
So, if I do suggest anything, I would suggest that we probably should mirror the change that we made to the elderly low-income. That is now based on the federal poverty guideline limits, so every year there is an adjustment. So I think that if we reflect the 200% limit of the poverty level, which is the lower end of the elderly low-income exemption, that mirrors the $22,000. Let me back up. So the $22,000, when we made that adjustment to the poverty level, that's now increased to $25,760. So that's what I would suggest, that we reflect that 200% poverty level limit and every year we can make that adjustment.
So if we just make the motion to reflect that, then we don't have to come back every year and change the amount?
That would be my.
Could we do that? Okay. So then every year we'd make the adjustment as you see. It going up or down, what's gonna go up?
Correct. The only thing that I may want to throw in there is that the elderly low-income exemption back in the day was $22,000 regardless of household size. We've adjusted that based on the poverty limit of the household size. So if we increase this program reflective of that, we may want to also modify the income based on household size as well. Because right now it's just $25,000 would be it, but do we want to adjust it based on household size as well?
So the federal poverty level based on the size of that household?
Right, so currently, household size of one, the limit would be $25,760. Household size of two would be $34,840. So.
And it goes up as the house?
As the higher it goes.
Yeah.
And then do you change the assessment limit also?
We do. So generally, that's always based on the average assessed value as of the last revaluation.
But if we do it this way, we're gonna give a lot more free bags.
How many bags do, or, you know, recipients do we have?
Yeah, currently, there's 128 elderly that receive the bags and basically that's an automatic for them. So there's 128 that goes to the elderly low-income and currently there are 55 other residents receiving the trash bags.
But if we do this according to household, then there'll be more. Could be, it depends on what, yeah.
Right.
It could be, because there could be people who have not even applied for this either, even.
Correct.
Well, the lady that was in front of us earlier in the evening is a good case. Average social security recipient starts taking benefits at 62. If you are a single social security recipient, you're gonna be, and you're using the median value of a house in dividend, you're spending 25%, almost 27% of your income on taxes alone.
Well, it depends on what your social security.
The average social security check is about $1,400. This is all up on the social security website.
Well, again, the low-income elderly, if they qualify for that exemption, they qualify for the bags automatically.
And do you tell them that?
Yes.
So, do you have any sense of how many households we have above four?
I don't, I haven't done that research. I don't imagine that there's gonna be a big impact on this.
Right, and then you have to look at the 26,5 for four and 31 for five.
Is this reflected in our budget? Like, do we have a line item for this? I don't think so.
No, because it comes from and out of the pay-as-you-throw program. That goes to the restricted fund for the landfill.
So we pay for the bags and then we, then the rest goes in.
Like, just a thought, when we're thinking about the casino money, maybe a portion goes into something to help support this type of program or people with all those abatements, because they're starting to increase. What did you say that the number was for the abatements for the year?
Oh, we're about 50.
50 or 60?
We're probably somewhere around 60.
Close to 70, 80.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that's getting off the thing, but.
We're probably gonna go over.
They go over this at the senior center, don't they?
Oh, yes, they do, yes. So, the motion.
Would this have to be part of an ordinance? Is it already an existing ordinance or is it just?
It's not, that was probably more of a legal question. When the program was established, the council came up with regulations and procedures.
But I don't think it's a part of an ordinance. I think that was here. Yeah, yeah.
The only place it really shows up is when you, if you look at what we took in for bags and what's left in the fund and all that, you see a discrepancy because they bought entitled bags and they're sitting around waiting to be distributed. You can figure it out with that.
What should the motion be, Mike?
Because I'm ready to make it. You want to increase it from $22,000, you're trying to bring it up to what he said, right? 25 and 34, 500?
Well, we want to, no, we want to tie it to.
The number of people, the number of family members, correct?
But we want it to be a formula so that it just, it changes as everything.
Can I suggest for you, Joe? That we approve a modification to the annual household income limits for pay-as-you-throw to match the annual poverty guidelines as set by the federal Department of Health and Human Services and which account for family size, family household size and income limits.
May I add, actually, if you want to amend that, please, to reflect the 200% level, because the poverty level just at the federal guidelines for a one-person household is $12,880. So, we would have to adjust it to 200%.
So if we did, so I'll make that, at 200, well, I'll give that to Joe to make.
So moved.
Second it, but Mike, have you done the math on what 200% of 35,580 is? I'm horrible, so that's another $7,000. So that's 42.
But that's a family of.
Yeah, that's a family of six. We probably don't have that many of those, but.
It goes all the way to family of eight.
And then you just add more.
My list goes up to four.
Yeah.
And this is gross.
Yeah. Okay. So I have a motion in second, any further questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, thanks, okay.
And then, how do we?
Also do the valuation properly, because you only did the income limits.
Right, well, we've been adjusting that. When the program initially started, the conversation at that point in time was to always reflect the average assessed value of the last revaluation.
I just didn't want it to get missed.
Yeah, so we don't have to do that.
Right, so that's already baked into it. Thank you.
Town administrator, update on Two-Rod Way. I'd like you all to know that some of us have been there. Exactly where it is now. I had a, the first time I went, I didn't even drive down because I thought the puddle was endless. But I did end up walking around. And I would never, I've been here all my life and I've never been down there, isn't that weird?
I second that.
It definitely, we didn't party down there.
It used to be a great place back in the day.
Well, we're not that far back.
I also want to say that I stopped at the reserve and I kind of looked at that route. That would be way too dangerous in the middle of the night for people to walk down there and go.
In broad daylight, you don't want to walk that route.
Donna, you went too, right? Yeah, there's curves, it's at all, so I have seen it and so I think Donna would be a day with that, Deb would be. So we all took a little field trip to.
It was a beautiful day, it was a very nice field trip.
So did you get to the water?
Yeah, I did the same thing as her, I was like, is this like going to China?
I was standing there looking.
It only goes to Japan.
Oh my god.
See, I had to walk around. I went a second time and decided to walk around it.
I parked at Rutgers and walked down and then walked out. It's not that far, it's just a little bit.
Yeah.
Wasn't bad at all.
So, I'll give you a brief update. TPW has been down there, has taken a look at it. We can try to do something with that road a little bit to kind of make it so it's a little bit more passable. The police department and fire department have both been down there and have reviewed it. The police department's instructed their staff to make more frequent rounds in that area. They have made outreach to the people who live in the area. In the meantime, I did contact CRMC and Jeff Willis got ahold of me last Friday and explained to me that their legal counsel is very concerned about what was being proposed. They have not finished going through their legal determination as to whether or not that needs to be opened similar to what the issue was at Manicore. I would suggest that we table this further until we can get a clear message from CRMC what they would be willing to entertain. They understood, they actually had, there's a letter, not a letter, a opinion letter in one of the local newspapers that outlined the whole thing. It was brought to the director's desk that day and they put their legal counsel on it right away. So he's very well in tune as to what's going on. And I did speak to him at a agriculture meeting over at Jamestown about it prior to that. So, they were already starting to take a look at it. But I just don't want us to make a decision that will be, that we'll have to reverse until they weigh in fully what we can and can't do. They believe it's an access point for the public to get to the water.
But does a car have to go down there? That's my question.
That's the legal issue they're trying to resolve right now.
If you could put a very small gated area where people could walk around there, I think it would stop a lot of what's going on there.
Because there are many access points around the state where basically you're walking down sand. You can't drive a car there, so why would this be, my question would be.
Because I was thinking just a small.
But I think one of the issues would be where would you park your car to walk there?
You can park at Rutgers, that's what I did.
Yeah, but to walk that road, but to walk that road.
Maybe it's because I walk all the time, it wasn't that far.
No, it's not, but it's a very windy road, there's no sidewalk and a lot of cars fly through there. I mean, I think that would be a safety issue.
And many people carrying kayaks or canoes, it's.
That's the only thing I would say is that there's no place to park down there too.
Another solution is if they make a pathway from Marcus to there, then you can park at Marcus.
So that is, what we would love to.
I don't know, I don't know.
While we would love to suggest that, it also belongs to the Audubon Society, it's not our property. But the Audubon Society also put in a letter supporting us to block the road, so.
So Brian is shaking his head when I said a pathway.
Because I.
The dry land is very narrow against Sepalitav during, in one section of there. And it's very steep at the same time. So I'm not sure it's possible, but I don't know.
So my other concern too, when I went, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I can say this. Steady traffic, walking, running, biking.
Down there.
On that section.
Of the road or the?
Of the road.
Of Sepalitav, yeah.
Well, I have a question for Chris. So you said doing something to that road to make it more passable. Do we need DEM approval and CRMC approval to do that kind of stuff?
I spoke to Jeff Willis about that as well. Because I instructed DPW, that road was becoming overgrown with briars and brook. And we did maintain it and cut it back. And I asked him, did I need to get an ascent for that? He said, absolutely not. You can maintain the right of way so it is passable and we expect you to do that without having to get an ascent.
But making it more passable might just cause more.
So.
Trash, down there.
It's the cars and trucks that are, that can load up and drop it off. Now, when I went there with Jay, there was a load of fluorescent lights, a bunch of them, just thrown and all broken glass. So, this is a problem. So I don't think it, access by right of way means that you have to have road access. As long as you can get there by foot, I believe. I think that was said at a meeting by, there was a woman that spoke to us about it and it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be by a car or a truck. Just you have to have access, which means foot traffic.
I had to talk to Chris about this, but the right of way, if it is a right of way or access, there's a width to it. There's gotta be a width, and that's what they're gonna figure out.
Two-Rod Way, it's two-Rod Way.
That's the name of it.
Yeah, but it usually means the two, it's measured by two rods, yeah.
33 feet?
That's a length, it really has nothing to.
A rod is a long, long.
Like I said, it was a short walk.
But what I do have to say, once, frankly if I'm wrong, once you're down there, there's only room to park a couple of cars down there.
Right.
You'd put some locks down there.
When you go all the way down.
Yeah.
So, it's really no different than Three-Rod Way at the end of Fogland, where people go.
There's really no way to park down there.
But Three-Rod is longer.
If there's two cars down there, you wouldn't be able to turn around, you'd have to back up.
But.
Which is what happened yesterday.
They have access to go windsurfing and.
So, one of my other concerns was as you come down Sepalitav and you take a right to go there, there's a house right there, I think that's the couple.
That was, yeah.
So, as you block that off, are they gonna have cars parked all in front of their house?
You might.
Well, they can have them towed.
I don't think you can, I can't really park. The road's not that.
It's a little more, it's wider than the dirt part.
I know, but their car would be blocking the road.
It would be.
Right across from their house on what's now Audubon, they quarried that at one time. I understand as the gravel went.
Put up signs, put up signs saying, smile, you're on camera.
They had to call for cars going off that edge.
Oh.
Ah, I can see how that might happen.
One of the many proprietary ways that we have in town, as Brian said, about three-rod way, eight-rod way, four-rod way, we have many proprietary ways. And they were there, you can be researched, so. And I guess the solicitor would say we own the width, it was used in colonial days, but it's one of them.
It is recorded in the plan, it says 33 feet.
I don't know how you can stop this unless you block it.
I also said, CRMC, I know it's an issue throughout the state.
It is.
CRMC sponsored three workshops this summer, Zoom-based and they're available online and I sat through two of the three. And the director, Jeff Willis, did the first one and then other folks joined in. But their take was that their responsibility is to declare something a public right of way. That's it. They said parking, keeping it clear, keeping it open, is all up to the town. Even the legal research. Even the legal research to declare it a public right of way is up to the town. Because they have no money to do any of that.
So if that's what it's gonna be, it should come back with a legal opinion stating such.
Right. And then from there, we have to decide what to do.
Could we take one of the old cruisers, park it down there? So people would think, yeah, so people would think there's somebody there watching it all the time.
So it gets all rusty? We could put a little.
It's rusty already.
We have rusty ones already. We have some that are almost antiques.
We could put a mannequin in there, Joe.
Well, like they did, I, I think it was in Coventry, Rhode Island, they put a cruiser in the middle of the highway with nobody in it, just so people would slow on it. To deter them. I mean, you know, for a couple of months, people figured it was.
But then they started to figure out.
Then they started. They realized this guy's here all the time.
And you put the lights on a time.
All right, so.
We do, no matter what we do.
So I'm gonna put this as an update every meeting until we, until we decide.
I just don't want to do something that we're gonna regret after. It's.
Whatever we do here, we may stop it there, but it's gonna migrate down to Sepaua Dab.
And then we'll all have to, then we'll have to do something down there.
We're gonna be chasing this forever.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, they did the same thing on Eagleville Road, the escape road. That was a, a haven for trash.
Right, and it's gated out.
And to a death, so now they go somewhere else.
Well, they go down. Yeah.
They go down to two rodway.
Yeah.
Our parking area used to be way in eight rodway. And we were hauling mattresses and TVs out of there and everything. And when we moved it out to East Road, it's done.
But we have stepped up presence, so we did want to report that anyhow.
Thank you. And all the counselors are hanging around down there too now, so.
A new hangup.
Don't worry. They're taking pictures of your trash.
Yeah, don't worry. We're just all hanging there. All right, Town Administrator, discuss it and possible vote on proposed ordinance for bidirectional communication and advertising of the same.
So I'm gonna bring both chiefs up so they can speak to this a little bit more than I can. We were doing some research on our radio communications and this topic came up. That we have a, a couple of places that are, for the public safety and for the safety of our staff, there are some structures that they cannot communicate in.
Oh, okay, we talked.
So in order to rectify that, there is a, we've been researching a state law that, the building code that requires any new structure that's 10,000 square feet or more. We can do testing to require whether or not there's any need to put these things in. The issue is any structures that are large enough to get expanded from where they are today. It's not new construction according to the building code. But we could, by ordinance, for the safety of our staff and the public, to require this, that we at least minimally test to ensure that there is the ability for our staff to communicate on, on their systems, both in and around the building. And if there is an issue, what remedies could we effectuate to protect people? So I was kind of blindsided by this and I think that, you know, we would like to see this become part of our building code so that we do, anything that comes up of a nature of 10,000 square foot or more is at least initially addressed to ensure that they can communicate. And anything that, where there was a modification to it. Now, we're looking, this is, would be a rough draft. There are a couple of things that we would have to modify this between now and a public hearing on it. And I'll let both chiefs speak to the, those kind of issues, but it's what size modification to a structure would it require? Would it be a percentage? Would it be a dollar value? Would it, you know? So, because it's not part of the current building code now. But we would like to at least see it locally to, so that there is public safety there.
So who would draft the ordinance this month?
So we're working with the state Fire Marshal's office to try to find out which communities actually have a working plan now and that we could adopt fully into the, into this community. Did I miss anything?
I was gonna say, he brought you up and then he said the whole thing.
I will just say, if you remember, we had this issue with the casino.
Yes.
Communications were a big issue. And to be honest, they are still an issue. It's improved. But in retrospect, if we would have had something like this at the time, while the building was being built, it would have been built right in. And then I know the chief can speak to the fire codes and the NFPA that we discussed, that the language kind of already exists.
So the, another one would be the Bond Mill.
Yep.
Has a very difficult time inside that structure, but they're putting two major additions to that. Might require them to rectify that issue. And look, the number of people living there and the staff going in and out of there, it makes sense.
Right now, it's the casino and the Bond Mill.
Well, and I don't know, you know, obviously when the storage facility gets up, I'm not sure the size of that, but at least that will then be tested.
Yes.
During construction, so they'll know. And any other structure that gets built would be tested.
The power plant also came up as well.
Long placks, it's long placks.
That's, and that still has additions going on that haven't been modified.
And as we go forward, this is something that, I mean, the fire marshal would go in there with portable radio and test. It might not require an antenna. So we're not adding this expense to incoming business owners that they have to spend thousands of dollars. This is something that they need to work with us and the fire marshal, the fire department, to make sure that if there's an emergency and public safety personnel are inside a large complex inside the town, we can communicate. That's the purpose of this.
So what's the cost of one of these?
So interestingly enough, it depends. It depends on square footage. It depends on the type of radio frequency. It also depends on when it gets installed. Conservative estimates, if the casino would have put one in today, about $100,000. If they would have put it in when the walls were open, about a quarter of that price, maybe about 20 to 25 thousand.
Because you have to put wiring in the walls.
Correct.
Rose, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'd like to say the, it's not just the square footage. I'm, little research, and I actually haven't even told the administrator this yet, little research today. It's not necessarily just the, the size of the building, it's the building materials and the way they build it. Concrete building with what I was told today, low E light glass. There's no, that low E light glass totally stops radio. And it's funny that somebody just mentioned the storage facility. There was one that was put up on the other side of the state. First floor was all cement and then it was all glass all the way around. There was no radiocomms in there at all. So it's not just, it's not just the size of the building that concerns us for sure.
Yeah, medical buildings, radiology suites, lead line walls. No cell service. I, it's, my office is there.
So, radio frequency. We're talking about changing our radio frequency. So now if these people, let's say long placks, was to put a system in to satisfy what we have now, what happens in the future?
There's a couple of different ways to answer that. First off, with the way that we utilize radio systems here, like, we're on the 800 system, police, and police has been on the 800 system for almost 15 years. That's the statewide interoperable system. Fire chief has, and the fire department has 800 capability, but they're currently 400. But that's a discussion that the fire chief is looking at. So going forward, once this ordinance is in place, you know, we're not going to give a business owner extra expense. You've gotta have two antennas. You gotta, we're gonna work all those issues out. But right now, we are in conversations about how we're gonna upgrade our radiocomms. And once we have that straightened out, any antenna going forward, and you also have to think about it, sir, this is not going into every single business. And even of the businesses that might need square footage or, or would, we would like a storage facility. Very possible that they might need, not need one. Well, if they do need one, we'll make sure that we work with them. I know the chief and his fire marshal are gonna do the same.
So that also has to be a compound matter because our mutually issues are all from Farover and Westport. The majority are on 400. So even if we do switch the fire department to an 800, in all likelihood, they're gonna have a hybrid system with a 400 capability anyhow, just for their public safety issues that they, they're gonna have to deal with.
So the first step is to draft this.
Yep.
Bring it forward to us and then we'll schedule a public hearing.
Yep.
I'm sure Mike would help too.
No, we'll, we'll definitely run everything through the system.
Yeah, okay, they'll do it.
A lot of fancy words in there, I don't know.
Fire?
All right.
Decibels. Good.
There's really no action except to talk about it. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
For the plan? Okay. Town Administrator, discussion, possible vote.
Don't go far, chief. You can leave.
Yeah, you can go. Discussion possible vote on hiring of one unobligated cadet from the police academy.
So currently we have three members in the current municipal police academy. And we were fortunate enough to garner one individual who was from the National Guard. Excellent candidate. And actually putting a few of them through the academy right now. So the other one that's in there right now is not obligated by any community. So we would get the benefit of picking up somebody at no cost to us for the training. We wouldn't have to wait till the next academy and get somebody online a year from now. And we are definitely anticipating a retirement in the near future. So it's short course for us to pick somebody up to cover this, to cover the retirement that's coming. And we expect this could be funded. I'll, I'll let the chief address it, but it, it's saving us about 18 months' worth of labor on this, at least in my view. But we're, we would be able to fund this in this current year, FY '22 budget with the anticipated turnover savings that we have now. I, I know that you, your staff was working on it. I think that we're pretty close to that, but I don't know if we're.
So right now we have 23? No.
No.
So when we are, we are fiscally.
Well, we're fully done.
Fiscally authorized for 31 police officers, including myself. So with the three, correct, with the three in the academy now, they are replacements for retirements, resignations. So for the first time in a long time, the police department is currently fully staffed. As the administrator said, there is one officer who we anticipate is going to retire. So, but as we all know, that officer could retire and is more than likely going to retire in the next six months. And the academy only runs twice a year. So when he does retire in the next, the next academy is January. We're not sending anybody to January, obviously, because we're full staffed. But when this situation with this officer gets resolved, we wouldn't be able to send a replacement until July, which means that person wouldn't graduate until this time next year, field trained. So we wouldn't see that replacement officer for just that one position until 2023.
And there might be other retirements or other things happening.
Yes.
Because we've seen this.
Absolutely.
So the only, I do agree with this completely, except that I'd like to put in the motion that this does not increase your manning.
Correct.
So it will increase your manning till May or June.
Correct.
But the 32 is, will not be a man.
With, with respect, you decide what the manning is.
Yeah, but you liked the 31 and we've discussed it. We've increased it in the past.
Correct.
So, and, and we're budgeted for 31.
We are budgeted for 31.
So I do agree, I think this is fiscally the right thing to do. Except that I, because in the past, and you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
We've been burnt because, well, it wasn't you.
Thank you.
Okay. But there was more in there. There was more.
This conversation also didn't take place back then.
Right. There was more sent, well, there was more sent to the academy than we had openings. And then all of a sudden, we had to hire these people and I was staffed, increased five of them. See Donna remembers. So I, I just wanted to make it clear, this isn't increasing your staffing. It's just for the time being.
Anticipating.
Anticipation of this, you know what happens. There's always something going on and we're always down a man. So because he's fully trained, because you like, because you do like him, right? You know.
We've done a battery check.
Done, done everything.
So and I will add as to what the administrator said, the Rhode Island National Guard has authorized two of their reserve members to go to every academy. They get two seats. So for the, and this is the first class that they've done this, this experiment. Tiberian now has the potential to grab the first two. So we will have two of these reserve members. So we enjoy the benefit of getting their training. This gentleman that we're talking about, the one that's in the academy, they're both sergeants. This gentleman that we're, that you're considering tonight is in charge of 40 individuals in the National Guard. He's done, done two tours of service in Afghanistan. He is an exceptional young man.
And it isn't the man I met at.
No, we already, no, we got him. We already got him.
We got him too.
Yeah, he was very, I met him and I was very impressed with him.
And he wants to come here.
And they do. And I think this is where, hopefully, you know, we're kind of turning a corner here and we are, because I can say for the first time in a long time, we're having a discussion like this, that we're actually fully staffed. And I know, to, to kind of echo what the administrator was saying, just looking at the savings, this gentleman's gonna graduate with the other recruits that we are sponsoring December 17th. They have been in the academy for six months. The average pay of paying those recruits is about $25,000 apiece. We've saved $25,000 because we're gonna enjoy the benefit of not paying his salary for the past six months if we hire him now.
Okay, so that's, that's my only concern. Because we've been burned in the past and you know, you were there, but you went to chief.
Correct.
And a discussion like this.
But he learned well.
He learned well. And a discussion like this.
Not that I would ever do in my life.
Did happen. But it wasn't made clear to us.
No, we're definitely making it clear and we will definitely keep you apprised of where we are.
Does anyone have anything else to say?
No, I just.
I just want to make sure I know where the money's coming from.
Well, we have, we have savings in the budget.
So we believe there are turnover savings already within the, very similar to last year, we turned back $350,000 out of your budget.
$326,000 given open positions.
Out of his budget, came back to the general fund.
Because of open positions. So we've had open positions. So we take that money.
So we believe the money's in the budget already.
It almost money's, it almost.
There's one other thing, some chief. We wrecked a cruiser.
Yes.
We're accredited.
Yes, sir.
How much do we save on a deductible?
So normally for any police liability or accidents, if we weren't accredited, it'd be a $25,000 deductible. But because we are, it's 25.
So we save 22,500. There's your officer.
There we go. So can I just, I'm just confused. How many do we have in the academy right now?
Three.
Not counting this one.
Three, not including this one. So, so we can be getting four new police officers.
So we have 29 working now.
Um, a little less.
Okay, and then we're gonna add the three.
So we will be.
31.
We will be 32 officers with one officer that's been out. So we're still working on the logistics of that.
Correct, yeah.
So once that happens, we'll go down to 31 working police officers, which is exactly what we're fiscally funded for.
And we've made it very clear that this does not increase your manning at this point. I mean, at some point, when you ask us to and we.
Correct.
Look at it all, but I just.
I think you said the key word, Madam President, when I asked.
That's the key word. I backed that.
What, what does, the, the grant that was just received was to increase community? That's not to increase numbers, though. That's a later discussion.
Because that's not on the agenda tonight, we really can't talk about it. It came in after the agenda. It is gonna be on your next agenda.
Okay. So right now, we're talking about these three plus one, four.
Correct.
To replace vacancies and retirements or, you know, potential.
Basically what this comes down to is because we have to send our recruits to the academy, we're saving time. So if we were to pass for sake of our conversation and say, we don't want to hire this individual, we just wanna have the three, we're not gonna hire this one. It is going to happen that we're gonna have another vacancy within the next six months, if not sooner. So now we're down again, as we have always been perpetually for years. So given the academy, given the hiring process, and because we don't have an active list, we start from scratch. Without the applications, bring the applications in, vet the applications, apply to the academy, go to the academy for six months and then come onboard and get hired.
And that training.
So that's an 18-month process. So all we're trying to do is get ahead of the game.
Which I, I'm all about being proactive. So we saved that $25,000 that we didn't have him onboard.
Yes, ma'am.
For that six months.
Mike?
One, I think this is a smart move. You and I have talked about this. Very smart move. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the hiring of an unobligated cadet from the municipal police academy to replace an anticipated upcoming retirement with the understanding that this will only temporarily add to your total cap from 31 to 32. And when that retirement happens, you'll go down, back down to 31.
I'll second.
Which been made and seconded twice.
And can I just like say one more comment?
Absolutely.
And we save, and we save on overtime too.
Yep. Yes.
So once, again, once we're full staffed, because we, as you know, we run three officer minimums. The other thing I would add to that point is, as you know, we negotiated in the contract that we were going to increase for a 12 shift with one and a supervisor. We have not been able to implement that to date because it's going to cost too much overtime. We don't have the staffing to do it. Which is why we put the clause in the contract. So at some point, I would like to actually do that because that was our proposal to make sure that we have a rated supervisor on our 4 to 12 shift. We're still not doing that because of our staffing issues.
Okay, so I have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Everyone all set? All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Can you pull on the academy in the morning, get any incentive paperwork?
He's already on standby.
He's gonna want to speed dial.
He's at his station now.
I'll be over there signing.
Thank you, sir.
We'll charge a two-rodway.
So town solicitor, update on K C A number N C 2021 0188. Joe Bishop Edel versus Joan Shabett, Tivenin Town Clerk.
So this is just a quick update. If you recall, during the budget process, the financial town referendum, the city, excuse me, the town clerk had threw out some petitions that were submitted by Mr. Bishop and Ms. Driggs as being untimely. They sued us to get an injunction to allow them to be accepted. The judge ruled in the town's favor that they weren't validly submitted in a timely fashion. After that injunction was denied, I then moved to dismiss the remaining counts. Those counts were dismissed by the Newport Superior Court Judge, Judge Carnes, about a month ago. And so the case is technically over on the Superior Court. But within 30 days of that dismissal, the plaintiffs, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Driggs filed a notice of appeal to the Supreme Court. So that will now be heard in Supreme Court as to the propriety of the motion to dismiss in the lower court. We just got the notice of it, so it'll be a while. There'll probably be a briefing scheduled, so we probably won't get the resolution of this until next year.
So this'll be further attorney fees and cost fees for, for us? In addition to what we've already paid for this case?
I don't do it for free, but yes, yes.
Well, yes, but, so this is just gonna cost the town more money. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Announcements, comments, discussions, Councilor DeMaderis, discuss on scheduling the initial budget workshop per charter, section 301 A1, no later than January 15th. I asked Joan to put this on, because sometimes we are scheduling this at the very last minute when we realize that this has to be done. So I was looking at the calendar, and I thought if we could throw out some dates to the school committee and budget committee, maybe January 4th and 5th, which is a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Now, the reason why I'm doing it a week early is because it was one year, we scheduled it, and there was a snowstorm. And we were like, had to have it two days, like, right away. So at least we have a whole week in case that happens, that, that we have time to postpone it. So does that, I was just thinking, the Monday is right after the weekend of New Year's. So I figured maybe Tuesday and Wednesday, the school committee does not have a meeting on that Tuesday, because they have one right after we do on the Tuesday. So does January 4th or 5th sound all right to all of you? Yeah, but you'll be back. So Joan, could you send this to the, to Jerry, maybe Jerry Locken, and whoever is representing the budget committee right now? I, I guess we could.
The chair is still Joe Souza.
Joe, yes, we could send it to Joe for now. Because I, they'll probably have some kind of a meeting around then to elect officers. We are down many members for the budget committee, just, just send it out there again if anyone's interested.
Yes, there's three open positions for the budget committee. And, and just to confirm, it's Tuesday, the 4th and.
Wednesday, the 5th.
Wednesday, the 5th.
And the reason why a week early is because of what I said, a huge snowstorm came, we had to cancel, we were almost stuck.
How long can this, how long can this stay eight members?
It can stay eight members forever.
You can also have tie votes.
Yep, yeah, but if we can't get anyone. Um, I do know there's a couple people working on getting people, and someone actually called me last night and think they have someone that's gonna come in. So, um, and I know another friend who's working on somebody for it, too.
Joan's waiting, just waiting for your applications.
So.
I've lost two good friends over this.
I know you have. All right, Councilor DeMaderis, discussion on canceling December 20, 7, 2021 meeting. We always discuss this, there's gonna be several, there's a couple of councilors away, Chris will be away. So if it's okay with all of you, we'll cancel that meeting. It's kind of a rough week for, for us to do anything.
Yeah, it's.
It's fine.
So we will cancel that meeting also. There'll only be one meeting in December.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Joan's back.